Here's meeting to order at 10:01. All those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice, strong voices today. It's a full, almost a full room. Do we have any public comment?
We didn't have it.
For items not appearing on today's agenda? All right, seeing none. Do we have any additions to the agenda from either Commissioner?
No.
All right. Moving on to our meeting minutes, we have a bunch of them for November 18th, 19th, and 21st, unless there's any corrections. All right.
I'll take, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meetings held on November 18th, 19th, and 21st.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the meetings held on November 18th, 19th, and 21st. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay, motion carries. We'll move on to our 2025 tentative budget adoption. Rich will be, Richard will be making the presentation, and of course, Richard and your staff and finance and all of the different, 52 different departments in the county contributed to this document. We started on it, what was it, John, back in early August? Or was it even earlier than that, Richard?
Late July.
July.
Earlier for me.
Started on it, the department had started on it in July. Richard started on it much earlier.
And we're still working on it.
And we're still working on it. Still working on it. Big document. But I'll hand it over to Richard to go over the slide deck.
Certainly. Thank you, Commissioners. I present to you the 2025 proposed county budget. These are some highlights. Fifteenth consecutive year without a tax increase. Therefore, the county's total millage of 7.84 mils remains unchanged. Growth in real estate assessed values increased 1.9%. This is the second largest increase in 10 years. The largest was in 2019 at 2%. And our average rate is 1.4%. Proposed, the proposed budget reflects a 1.6% increase in real estate tax revenue. So revenue is up 1.9%. Estimated revenue up 1.6%. The buffer is for late tax collections.
Ah, yes.
The total operating budget is 118.5 million. This is an increase of 4.8% increase from 2024 budget. For comparison, the average four-year core inflation rate was 4.5%. And the highest during this period was in September 2022 at 6.6%.
Oh, okay.
The capital budget is 16.5 million. Therefore, the total budget is 135 million. This is a decrease from last year, 4.7% because of the 2025 capital projects is less than this year, 2024, because the courthouse retaining wall was recently completed. The completion of the human services building is expected to be completed in mid-2025. So higher capital spending in this year and less in this year, next year. Expenditures, primary cost drivers, increases in employee group insurance. This, the budget includes 11.7 million total contribution to the county's health insurance and retirement plan for employees. And this covers total personnel costs of 45.8 million. However, the underlying challenge is the cost increases from inflationary pressures. This is a representation of the total operating expenditures by category. Largest category is personnel costs at 39%. Second largest contracted professionals services at 34%. That's driven by primarily our human service agencies and them providing the services to our citizens.
And there are roughly 100 partner agencies that we all fund with that.
That's correct. And then the third largest category is operations of 13%. Revenues, total revenues is 116.3 million. This is an increase of 3.7 over the 2024 budget. And this is a representation of the revenues by category. The third largest grants, 45.9 million is 39% of the budget revenues. Second, real estate taxes at 26%. And then department earnings of 18%. That's charges for services, core costs and fees and related other earnings. This is a total budget, including capital projects of the 1.35 million. I like to present it as, as the function because this shows what our, demonstrates what our priorities are. The largest category is human services at 29%. That's the agencies such as children and youth, mental health, adult and aging services. The second largest category is administration, and that's the basic operation of the county. And then the third is capital projects and then judicial. That's for maintaining a functional court system. And then corrections and public safety at 17%. The proposed budget includes a $2.2 million use of fund balance to provide adequate funding for county services. The bottom line, the proposed budget will maintain a general fund reserve of 15% of total expenditures. This is a best practice, a recommendation by the Governmental Finance Officers Association. Today begins the required 20-day public comment period before you can consider the adopted budget, and that is scheduled for December 31st. I'm open to any questions at this time.
Thank you, Richard. I just wanted to mention that administration includes important areas like elections, recorder of deeds, some of the other role officers. It includes areas like tax assessment. So yes, it's administrative, but services are provided. It just, we have traditionally put them in that category.
That's correct.
So that was one point I wanted to make, but I'll open it up to Commissioner Concepcion. Any questions?
Yeah, I really appreciate the effort that's gone into getting us to this point. We were at the County Commissioners Association Conference in Hershey last week and talked to a number of other counties about the budget pressures they're under. I talked to commissioners from all different sizes of counties who are looking at tax increases anywhere between 10 and 30, over 30% in some of these counties. And we're really fortunate to have a community with a even gradually growing tax base that has allowed us to not have to raise taxes because we have, while it was gradual, we do have revenue growth, not, not falls in revenue, which is what a number of other counties are experiencing. But this really speaks to significant amount of time and effort put into making sure that we're operating as efficiently as possible for the taxpayers while still providing the high level of services that we know people expect, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Concepcion. Commissioner Dershowitz, this is your 21st budget, give or take?
Well, I want to say thank you for all your hard work to begin with and your whole team, and I know with John and not only the commissioners, but folks throughout the county. But this is not quite the end because we do have some loose ends to tie up between now and, and the final, the final adoption. But I think this is a pretty solid budget, and I think it gives us the flexibility that we're going to need to handle what, come what may over the next year. And I'm very excited to see, to see the actual final, final version of this, which at the end of the month. But we will probably have to tweak this a little bit and make, make some final adjustments, but it looks really good. And I think you've done a yeoman's job of presenting a very fiscally conservative budget for us, so I want to thank you. That does include a COLA increase for our employees as well, which is pretty solid to say.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner Dershowitz. Yeah, as Commissioner Concepcion mentioned, when we were at the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania Fall Convention, just a week ago, seems like longer, practically every county there was either looking at a property tax increase of from 10 to, I think the highest might have been as high as 41%. There were several in the 30s. Or if they weren't doing that, they had very, very significant budget deficits that required some pretty severe cuts. So we are very fortunate here in Center County, and I'd like to congratulate Center County government staff, the courts, and the row offices on a great job for the 225th year. Center County government will be adopting a budget on time, and for the 15th year in a row, Center County will not be increasing property taxes or doing a reassessment. I want to acknowledge the assistance of the over 100 partner agencies included in this budget, and of course, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and federal government who provide 39% of county funding. The forecasted deficit is 1.7% of the total budget, and we hope that conservative assumptions, combined with paying close attention to the bottom line, will close this gap as we have almost every year for the past 14 years. Our general fund reserves, as Richard mentioned, are roughly 15% of the general budget, which is toward the upper end of the recommended range for county governments, but realistically would allow us to operate for two months with no outside funding. Providing over $118 million of services from $30 million of local property taxes would not be possible without the generosity of Center County citizens. They help fund the over 100 human services partner agencies who serve, I think, according to Julia, over 24,000 unique Center County citizens who require human services annually. I know 24,000 people sounds like a lot, but this number is actually toward the low end for counties of our size in the Commonwealth, and do want to remind everybody it is Giving Thursday. So appreciate all the hard work that went into this budget. And shall we open it up for questions on that budget at this point, Joe?
Sure.
All right, we'll open it up for questions from the press.
I'm sorry, Kingman, did you, is there a salary increase for non-union county personnel?
As Steve mentioned, we do have a COLA in the budget, but we, we haven't finalized the exact percentage of the COLA yet, but it's, it's not going to be big.
County's budget 2020 was about 82, 84 million.
Yes.
Is it a combination of factors? What's driving the increase in this 20-year?
It's primarily capital projects, Gary. As Richard was mentioning, the amount of capital projects last year was, was huge, and it's ongoing into 2025. Additionally, there have been additional funds coming in from the opioid settlement. We have additional funding coming in for the elections department. We have additional funding coming in for children and youth, additional funding coming in for public defenders, a broad variety of additional increases in grants from state and federal sources.
You mentioned the situation of the mental health funding with the state for agents.
Yes.
Is the county being mandated to pay more human services programs on a county level, even though they're ordered by the state or whatever?
Um, the answer to that is roughly yes. The county does need to provide mental health services, children and youth services, adult services, senior services to 160,000 residents. I believe roughly 18,000 of our residents directly access county services, and those costs continue to climb, in some cases, like children and youth. The state has been providing us with additional funding, and other areas like mental health, the state funding there has not come close to matching the rate of inflation.
We have, you have two, two separate issues there. One is, first of all, the entitlement programs, which basically are telling us, okay, you must fund these, these programs. Then you have the mandated programs, which is, you know, we fund them up to our ability to, to fund them. And then we have the nice-to-provide program. So there's three different, actually, three different tiers of, of programs, and as we move forward, that's what we're always cognizant of, of how we, how we provide those services. Because the mandated ones and the, and the entitlement programs are the ones that we have to, we have to fund, so.
Great questions, Gary. Any, any questions, Tim?
I have one for Commissioner Dershowitz. You mentioned that there are some loose ends that need tied up for the budget. Can you just tell me what you meant by that?
Well, I think there's a few. First of all, we have some personnel items, and I think we have the, the tax collectors here. That's a conversation we need to have. There's a few out there beyond that, but it's general small things that we need to tie up with the, one of the things that we got hit with this year, unfortunately, is the election season lasted a little longer than we were anticipating, which exhausted a lot of our time over the last several weeks. And so we do have some cleanup work to do. Not anything major, but this is the general framework, but I think, you know, specifically those, those areas are ones that need to be approached. But we will, we will fine tune it, and we have 20 days to, to do that, and we look forward to, to cleaning this up and having a, a budget ready for 2025.
Thank you.
Another good question. Anything from the CDT? No? All right. Um, yes?
I'm Donna Miller from, I'm a Greg Township.
Oh, do you want to approach the microphone?
Yeah.
Because obviously the press knows what questions they ask.
I'm Donna Miller, Greg Township Tax Collector, and also President of the Center County Tax Collector Association. And the collectors have come and asked the commissioners, and we've been in communication. But our, I just want it for the record that as tax collectors, we have not had an increase in our compensation since 2002. And we have been in communication, and that is paid on a per parcel basis. But thank you for your time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have an answer for you by the end of the month. We've got some.
And we'll have communication with you in between that as well.
Okay. I thought it was December 31st, when it's a done deal.
Well, it will be.
Yeah.
It will be. But we'll be in contact with you before that.
Yeah, we'll have something in there for you. Just as Steve mentioned, election season lasted substantially longer than we had planned. So we, we had to take some of the budget items and put aside some contingency money to work on it over the rest of the month. Any, any other questions? Yes?
Morning, Commissioners. I am Ben Estelle. I am the Executive Director for the Center Region COG, and I've been fortunate enough to meet most of you at this point. I'm happy to meet everybody else here soon. I'm here this morning because I, we have been going through our own budget process as well, and being new to the region, I've been trying to follow along with your budget process through the minutes of your meetings. And I saw in the October meeting that the request for funding for the Active Adult Center was not considered as part of the budget proposal, but was considered separate from, from that. And I have not seen an update through the minutes yet on any resolution to that. So I wanted to come this morning to at least make, make clear that request was to maintain the level of funding at 33% that was with our prior agreement. Unfortunately, I was hired in late August and was not here in time to try to negotiate a new agreement before budgets needed to be set, so that was not able to be done ahead of time. But the request in funding was to maintain the same funding level that was included in the prior three-year agreement that we had with Center County. You may have already addressed this through the budget in there. However, if you have not, I would respectfully request that over the review period here, if you have any further questions for the Center Region COG, that you please let us know what those are. We provide vital services, and the Center Region is providing 2/3 of the funding to maintain this facility that has had a massive increase in usage over the last several years. This is a vital service we provide to our seniors, and I would not be doing my job if I was not here to advocate for them and to make sure that we do not need to cut services because of a lack of funding.
Right. Great. Appreciate your concerns, Ben, and we're very excited about our partnership with the Active Adult Center at the, at the mall. As you mentioned, the usage is actually up substantially.
Yes.
Over the last couple of years. I think in part because of the events and activities at the center and the staff. And so, yes, we very much want to continue that partnership, and I'm pretty sure we've got some, something close to that in the budget for you. But again, one of those items that, based on having to cancel budget meetings and replace them with elections meetings, I think we still have to finish it up.
Certainly understand, and as I said, I know that there's still some review time, so we'd be happy to, you know, discuss in the interim. Our budget is wrapped up, so I will make whatever time I need to make available to you available.
Oh, great. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Any additional questions on the budget? No? All right. Looks, looks like we're fine then. Thank you very much, Richard, and staff, and.
Yes, thank you.
Controllers, and administration, and 52 different role officers, and department heads, and sub-department heads for putting together the, how many pages is the total budget going to be, Richard? Over 100?
What would you say?
Close, yeah.
About 100?
Yeah.
About 100 pages?
Yep.
All right. Any other questions from either Commissioner? No?
I'll move to adopt the 2025 tentative county budget and authorize advertisement for public inspection.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the 2025 tentative county budget and authorize advertisement for public inspection. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay, motion carries. All right, moving on to contracts and authorizations. We mentioned recorder of deeds earlier, and here's our recorder of deeds with a contract renewal.
Yes. Good morning, and I'd like the Commissioners to authorize a contract with InfoQuick Solutions of Liverpool, New York to provide index verification services for the documents that we record in the recorder's office. InfoQuick Solutions has been working with the county, with the recorder deeds office since almost 20 years now. And the original contract that we had with them, I looked back in my records, they're, we were at like 37 cents per document. And unfortunately, because of inflation and increases in cost, this contract renewal is going to be at $2.35 per document. So that's the cost of doing business.
Yep.
I want to mention too that each document is verified twice in our office, and this is a third set of independent eyes that look at every document that we do, make sure that, for example, Stephen Dershowitz is spelled with S.T.E.V.E.N. instead of S.T.E.P.H.E.N. So it typically keeps our, our, and when we do it in the, in the office, we have about a four and a half percent average error rate per document. And what this service does is looks at all the documents and ensures us that, you know, that those four and a half percents are caught, or at least 90% of those four and a half percent errors. So it's a valuable service, and we're confident that with the ability of the company that's doing it, so I'd ask for your approval for the contract for two years.
Got a question, Joe.
Yes.
Does this work like autocorrect, where it goes through and just like corrects things? Or does it require, say, hey, Joe, what do you think?
No.
How does it work?
Well, because of the increase in cost in this contract versus the old one, or more than a dollar per, per, per document, I went out to some other vendors that claimed that they could do this, and the other vendors that say they do it are using AI or artificial intelligence to OCR each document and then compare it with what we input. I wasn't happy at all with those results, because some of our documents that we get in the recorder's office are still handwritten, and that makes it very difficult to do an OCR or AI comparison for indexing purposes. And in, in, in New York, at IQS facility, each of the documents are reviewed by two people, and the first person looks at the document and says, for example, Stephen should be spelled with S.T.E.V.E.N. instead of S.T.E.P.H.E.N. And then it goes to a supervisor, and the supervisor looks at that document and says, yes, that's correct. We're going to recommend this correction. But they don't do the correction. That report comes back to us, and we still look at it then a fourth or fifth time, and we make the final decision about whether it gets changed to S.T.E.V.E.N. or S.T.E.P.H.E.N.
Got you.
So AI is a tool that's going to be useful in the future, but I don't think it's, it's quite there yet, the accuracy that we need.
Good.
And, and it's important, too, that other companies that, that claim that they can do this type of service or index verification, there's, there's a lot of them that don't do it domestically, that the indexes or the images are shipped offshore, and they're done, out of, out of country. So it was important to me to keep this domestically located and the service, and I have confidence in the vendor, so I'm recommending that you approve the contract.
How many documents do you generally do a year through this process?
Well, in, in my proposed budget, we budgeted for $2.25 per document, and the rate came back at 2.35. And I, I budgeted this year that we were going to do like 14,000 documents, and our total so far is around 11,000. So I think, you know, our, our volume and activity is extremely low today versus five years ago, but we're hoping after the election and the results there that they'll come back up, and, and we'll see increased activity in real estate and economic, that, activity.
Increase, okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Joe. That's assuming people will actually sell their homes. It's also an inventory problem.
Yep, yep. There, there are not a lot on the market out there right now.
Yeah.
But there are a lot of commercial activity going on, so.
Good.
That, that keeps our revenue up, even though the volume's down, because the average price per transaction on those commercial activities is much higher than the residential stuff.
All right. Great. Any, any questions on that? We'll take a motion.
All right, then I'll move to add the contract with InfoQuick Solutions to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with InfoQuick Solutions, Inc., to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Joe. All right. Another department we mentioned earlier, we have Dave from Public Defender's Office.
Good morning. We're here to ask for consideration for the approval of our contract with Thompson Reuters to provide our law library services. We've been dealing with Westlaw for about 30 years. Through them, we've been able to get rid of a hard-bound library and do everything online because the law changes so much. In our office, so far this year, we've written and filed 28 appellate briefs for a variety of issues. We really need the full package Westlaw provides because some days we may be working on a child dependency case. That was the last brief I wrote. So it's just a lot more than the typical criminal, criminal stuff we do, and we really need the full package. We ask for approval of this contract.
Great. Thanks, Dave. And John, I don't know if you had a chance to look into it with the holiday rush, but are we coordinating our purchase of these services with the courts and with the district attorney as well?
We've done that in the past. I haven't seen a change in that.
Okay, what, back in the old days when Mark Smith was the first Assistant District Attorney, we were coordinating with Westlaw, but Westlaw frowned upon that. I think when Mike Medir was elected DA, he decided to go his own way, and we weren't I think when Mike Medier was elected DA, he decided to go his own way, and we weren't negotiating a one-package deal for all three of the wings of...
All right.
Yeah. I just wondered if there could be some efficiency in that.
Yeah. Can we check into that for the next budget year? Because obviously, if you need 34,000, I'm assuming the DA needs 34,000, and the courts might need at least another 34,000.
Plus, they still keep their bound volumes. We've been able to...
Ah.
We sacrificed, we got rid of
Okay.
The contract to provide a hard set of pardons.
Yeah.
I think, I don't think anybody's keeping a hard set of the reporters
Yeah.
Anymore. That was terribly expensive, to duplicate that, but we got rid of our pardons updates and
All right.
Just focused solely on electronic.
Sure.
But if we could coordinate, that'd be great, because it was just that when Mike took over, he told Mark, "No more helping."
Huh. And what, is it a license per user? Is it per office?
It's licensed per user.
Okay.
So, we have, at full staff, we'd have eight attorneys.
Mm-hmm.
So, we'd have eight licenses for them, plus they would piggyback with a paralegal.
Okay.
It would cover the full 15
Mm-hmm.
People we'd have in the office at full staff. But it's basically tied to the number of attorneys you have in your office.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can see maybe it would put us up to the next discount level if we combined all three groups.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Concepcion, any other questions? Commissioner Dershowen?
No, I think I'm pretty clear.
Then I'll move to add the contract with Thompson Reuters to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with Thompson Reuters to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you next week.
And there's Kristen for Human Resources. We've got an item for dental insurance.
Yes, I'm looking for approval of the contract with United Concordia Companies to provide dental insurance coverage for the county. This has been reviewed already by the Employee Benefit Trust, which sets the benefits for the year, but the contract would then provide our dental insurance for two years through United Concordia, which will expand our dental network and give better reimbursement for those employees out of network as well.
Great. Thanks, Kristen. Thanks for the work on this. It's about the same cost, but
Right.
We have substantially more dentists that
Yes.
Do this insurance. Yeah. I think this will probably be appreciated by employees trying to find dentists to take the charge.
It was well received during open enrollment that we were changing over.
Sounds good.
Commissioner Dershowen?
No, I'm good. I'm glad to see the approval, because that's always been a challenge, making sure we have enough dental
Yes.
Providers to service our employees.
Then I'll move to approve the contract with United Concordia Companies, Inc.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with United Concordia Companies, Inc. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Kristen. Now, over to John with an item for elections.
Before you, for consideration, is an agreement with Babs, Callan, Clements, and Zomner Law Offices to provide Center County and five other counties in joint representation in a litigation filed with the District Court relative to election. This is the civil action that went across the entire state relative to the dating issue. It's already been settled. It's settled quickly. As you know, we already have an ongoing retainer with Babs, Callan for services. This is about just splitting the cost on this particular case with other counties.
We don't have a sum total, how much the...
We have not received the final invoice on it. It should be relatively low, considering how quickly it was settled.
Yeah.
All right. All right. So, and this one was the one filed in the Middle District of Pennsylvania titled "The Republican National Committee at All Versus All 67 County Board of Elections."
Yes.
And we're fortunately got six, five other counties were splitting this with.
Yes.
All right, good.
Yeah. I mean, this has just become like part of the cost of running elections. Seems to include pretty regular lawsuits that are, you know, in the case of, for many of our counties, we're simply trying to follow the rules as we've been given them by the courts and find ourselves having to defend ourselves over and over at cost to the taxpayers, but...
Fortunately, our retainer with Babs, Callan, they are a firm that does work like this across the state, so it...
Mm-hmm. And I appreciate the effort to
Yeah.
Make it efficient. Yep.
The good thing about this is I think most of these issues have now been resolved, so hopefully
Yeah.
This slows down considerably.
Yes.
Hopefully so. We were sued 17 times in 2020, including by Rudy Giuliani with the hair dye situation. Here in 2024, we've been sued, I think it's nine or 10 times, not by anybody specifically famous. And as John mentioned, at least some of these seem to be settling faster than they did in 2020.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, then I'll move to approve the agreement with Babs, Callan, Clements, and Zomner.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Babs, Callan, Clements, and Zomner, PC. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, John. And now, Krista, not to be confused with Kristin. Krista has an item for risk management.
Yes, good morning, everyone. So, while we have seven on our custodial staff to clean our larger buildings, we still need cleaning services in our outer-lying MDJ offices. There's five of them that we do look for a vendor to clean our offices. So, last year, we came into an agreement with City Clean Janitorial Services. They've done a great job. Our staff there has been happy with their cleaning, and they have agreed to renew their contract with us for next year at a 0% increase.
Oh, nice.
So, we are very excited about that. So, I'm here to ask for your approval on the contract renewal with City Clean Services. The contract total is $31,875 for the period of January 1, 2025 to December 31, 2025.
Great. Well, please thank City Clean Janitorial Services for us for the no increase in the contract.
Exactly. It's wonderful, yes.
Just a point of clarification, we didn't have to bid this, correct?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we got that base covered.
All right. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
I'll move to add the contract with City Clean Janitorial Services, Inc., to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with City Clean Janitorial Services, Inc., to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Kristen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And now, I believe John has an item under Capital Projects.
Yes, before you, for consideration, is a contract for additional design services with MG Architects. MG is the architect, the design firm that is helping us with our Center, former Center Crest project, making that our human services. As you know, we decided to, the county decided to pull back on renovating the commercial kitchen that is in the facility, and in place of that, we are putting in a marketplace, which is a much smaller vending type of space for folks that frequent the building, including employees. And so, there's some minor design service that needs to occur to design that space. It is more than offset by the savings, which was in the hundreds of thousands in savings by not choosing to move forward with the commercial kitchen renovation. So, before you, for consideration, is approval of additional design services with MG Architects in the amount of $7,800.
Great. Thanks for covering that, John. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
Sounds good.
Commissioner Dershowen?
I'm good, thank you.
All right.
Then I'll move to approve the additional design services with MG Architects.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the additional design services with MG Architects. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Thanks, John. And now, Julia has multiple agreements for us from MHIDEI Drug and Alcohol.
Good morning. So, the first thing I have is a contract addendum with the Youth Service Bureau to provide additional performance-based prevention services in the amount of $150,000. So, these services are to all five school districts. As they are evidence-based, they are eligible to be funded partly by opioid settlement monies, so we are asking that you approve this contract addendum.
And move on to the next one.
Okay. So, the next is contract renewal with the Advocacy Alliance to provide mental health services, including social rehabilitation, CFST case management surveys, and then with intellectual disability services, including incident management and transportation services. So, the contract total is $57,000, with the state share being $54,372, county match being $2,628.
Great. Thanks, Julia. And as you see there, Gary, that is an example of the opioid settlement funds being deployed into the community. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, I'm glad we're able to do this, particularly with the performance-based prevention services. So, we're, you know, always looking for ways to make sure we have better outcomes and prevent having situations with kids involved in the criminal justice system. It's
Yes.
A lot better to prevent that than to have to address it later on, so...
Yeah, and happy to do it in all five school districts for some consistency amongst the county.
Absolutely.
I'm good, thank you.
All right.
Then I'll move to add the MHIDEI DNA Contracts, one and two, to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the two contracts for MHIDEI Drug and Alcohol to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Julia. All right. Now, Brandy is here from Aging with a Lease, I believe.
Good morning. I'm asking for consideration of the approval of the lease between the Snowshoe Medical Center and the Snowshoe Senior Resource Center. This is a three-year lease, starting January 1, 2024, to December 31, 2027. The first year's rent will be $600 per month, second year would be $624 per month, and the third year will be $649 per month. The contract total will be $22,476, and the total will be funded by the state for the entire length of the contract.
Great. Thanks for covering that, Brandy. And of course, if there, and we appreciate our partnership with the Mountain Top Area Medical Center, and if there are any medical providers who are looking for a location in northern Center County, I believe you might be able to get a bit of a deal, if anyone's interested.
Yeah, there is still space available there.
Space available.
Lots of space available.
Yes.
Yeah. But I know this is really important for the residents of the Snowshoe area.
It is. With a lot of the things leaving the county, the attendance has grown actually at the senior center, which is great, and gives them some socialization, so it's, it is very nice.
It's important.
Great. Very reasonable price, too.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's been very fair. Happy to support it.
Good. Well, happy to help the seniors up in the Mountain Top and continue the program and support the Mountain Top Area Medical Center.
Okay. I'll move to add the lease with the Mountain Top Area Medical Center to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the lease with Mountain Top Area Medical Center to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Brandy.
Thank you.
And I see Dave is out in the hallway itching to buy some more vehicles.
Yes, I am. Good morning, everyone. Thank you. We can always use some updated vehicles in this county, for sure, and it's a great opportunity for us, as we all know. So, I asked for consideration of approval of an in-kind purchase of four vehicles from Penn State using in-kind funds. They will all be placed in our business fleet in various locations as needed to meet needs of old and not-so-good vehicles that we've sort of worn out. Some of our departments travel a lot of miles on an annual basis, and it just, they do eventually wear out, so then we take them and sell them and put it back in and keep recycling, but they, you know, it's, when they're available, we sort of grab them because they're not always available, so, and we have departments that can certainly use them, so... Total cost, including our fee, would be $58,025 in in-kind funds for us to purchase these four vehicles.
Dave, do we know why John needs a police interceptor?
Well, that's not public knowledge. No, he's, we have John a nice vehicle for when he has to travel. It is not a police interceptor thing.
No, it's a hybrid.
It's a hybrid. We have a hybrid, and we have several hybrids in the fleet, which are working well.
Lighters sirens on his...
No, no, no. We won't tell you what we put on there.
What's the number of that?
Double oh-seven.
Absolutely.
It does have machine guns in the headlights.
Oh, there we go.
I haven't showed him that switch yet.
And a smoke screen.
Yes.
But, you know, it's obvious that the amount of travel our county departments do, it's just continuous to keep these vehicles updated so that they're not breaking down and having issues, and thank goodness, that's a rare thing anymore. There was a time that, that was a constant thing, and we had tow trucks towing cars to Erie to bring back a disabled car and allowing the caseworkers to do their jobs, believe it or not. You know, we'd take a car up, give it to them, bring the disabled car back, so thank goodness, that's not been a happening event lately, but it's because of these efforts, you know.
We have a great relationship with Penn State.
We appreciate the partnership with Penn State, the ability to use the in-kind funds to purchase nice used vehicles, and I know those Ford Fusion hybrids get 37, 38 miles to the gallon, so they also save the taxpayer.
When I'm driving, I take the one to Lancaster, I get 50 mile a gallon, so we must be driving different.
You must be driving the speed limit, Dave.
Only kidding. No, they are nice, though. They're very nice, well, they keep up their vehicles, that's the key. They maintain them, and it's pretty cost-effective, obviously. Thank you, though.
You're welcome. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, I think, I appreciate that opportunity to get those hybrid vehicles.
Absolutely, yes.
It's a couple of times when I've seen just taking a county car somewhere, a field, and, you know, not, we're having to worry about refilling it until you get back is really nice.
Right, it's nice.
Sometimes drive a couple hours to Hershey and come back and have most of your tank still in the tanks.
Makes it nice.
Yeah.
Especially if you drive the speed limit, Commissioner Concepcion.
Exactly.
Commissioner Dershowen, anything?
I think I just have to echo, you know, this I think I just have to echo, you know, this is to the advantage of Center County by virtue of our agreement with Penn State. So in lieu of taxes, this is, this is an incredible use for us because otherwise, we'd be buying either these vehicles from them in cash or buying new vehicles, you know, considerably more. We've, we have a strong track record of really driving the wheels off these vehicles and getting pretty great value. So it's been, it's been fantastic. Again, appreciate all your efforts because I know you have a strong relationship with the folks at Penn State to make sure we get good vehicles. And you're up there making sure that that's timely occurring on a routine basis. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Then I will make a motion to approve the in-kind purchase of four vehicles from Penn State University.
I will second it.
We have a motion to second to approve the in-kind purchase of four vehicles from Penn State University. All those in favor do so by saying aye. 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 Pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Dave. Now, Cochee is here to cover our liquid fuels program and fee for local use allocation. These are funds that are provided by either the five-dollar fee on vehicle and trailer registrations or from the county's share of the liquid fuels tax statewide. This does allow especially our medium-sized and smaller municipalities the ability to get their bridges fixed, have major road repairs taking place where the county is helping them stretch their budget a little bit further. I'll hand it over to Cochee now for more details.
That is correct. The county actually does not only own any roads or bridges. So we're in a great position to be able to turn over some funding to our local municipalities. And that funding sources comes from three different areas that we look for for the transportation funding projects. The first is the liquid fuels, which is your gas tax. Essentially, that's used for future road and bridge construction and reconstruction and maintenance projects. The second funding source that we look at is the fee for local use, which is what we call the five-dollar fee. And that's when you register or renew your registration of your vehicle. Those funds are collected, and they're constitutionally limited to construction, reconstruction, maintenance, and repair of the safety of public highway and bridge purposes.
And Cochee, what percentage of that five-dollar fee actually goes towards the road construction, engineering, et cetera?
A hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
That's a hundred percent. Yes. Yeah. The Act thirteen, which is our relatively newest source of funding, is from the Marcellus Shale. And that is specifically used for repair of local bridges and roads. And you can see where the Marcellus Shale is in Center County. Through this process, we sent out applications to all municipalities in Center County, boroughs, townships. They were to be returned by October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, by five o'clock. We had a concurrent review of the processes with Penn Dot and county staff between October twenty-first and November thirteenth. And we were looking at projects to be evaluated based on the project type, the municipal contribution, the municipal need, and then the last allocation year in which they received funding. Here's a listing of all those projects and what the amount was requested, the total project cost, the municipal match, and then the project type. So we had a variety of safety projects. We had road maintenance. We had bridges, and we had some drainage issues. With that said, a summation of that, we had eighteen applications from eighteen municipalities that were submitted on time. We did have a few that came in late, and they were, they're kept in reserve. We have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in county liquid fuels available for the twenty twenty-five program, and we've received three hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars in fee for local use funds for the twenty twenty-five program allocations. What's been requested from those municipalities is one million three hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. That's thirty-two percent more request than what was requested in twenty twenty-four. We had a hundred and thirty-nine percent increase in total project costs. So those eighteen applications equated to five million six hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. We also have the bridge bundles still active that will be completed sometime in twenty twenty-five. The anticipated completion date is November. So we're holding in reserve one million six hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars of Act thirteen funds and nine hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred dollars in fee for local use funds. With that, these are our recommendations. For the liquid fuels funding, we're recommending funding to Ferguson Township, Half Moon Township, Patent Township, and Potter Township for a total of. A lot of these projects are safety projects. For Ferguson Township, it's an installation of an ADA compliant curb ramp at Autumn Wood and Bristol Avenue. The allocation recommendation is fifty thousand dollars. For Half Moon Township, it is for T three oh nine Smith Road berm restoration for twenty thousand dollars. Patent Township, we're recommending for T six seventy North Oak Lane curbing and overlay of sixty-five thousand dollars for the allocation. And Potter Township, which is one of the bridge projects, is for T six thirty-three Lower Georgia's Valley Road Bridge Replacement. It's a two-million-dollar project, and we're recommending fifty thousand dollars. Potter Township's putting in almost four hundred thousand dollars of their own money. For the fee for local use programs, we're recommending Haynes Township, Snowshoe Borough, Spring Township, and Worth Township for a total of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. For Haynes Township, it would be for T five seventeen Middle Road, which would be a full depth reclamation. It's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, and we're recommending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For Snowshoe Borough, they're looking at paving Nectarine Street, Thomas Street, and Sixth Avenue. We're recommending an allocation of sixty-five thousand dollars. For Spring Township, it is a drainage improvement and repair for Bud's Alley and Blanchard Street Extension, and we're recommending thirty thousand dollars. And for Worth Township, it is T three eleven Sawmill Drive or Sawmill Road, which is a gravel road repair. That is not a pavement. That it will be a gravel repair of forty thousand dollars. So those recommendations are two hundred and eighty-five thousand. And then we, the six hundred and eighty-five thousand is what we asked for last week for the bridges, for the twenty nineteen bridge replacements. And those are in Belfont Borough and Howard Borough.
Quick question. If you could go back to that slide. Worth Township, like gravel road, do they, do they apply for dirt and gravel road funds through the Conservation District?
I do not know that. I do not know that. I can still check into that.
Frankly, I think that's a better use, just for future, you know.
Most of, most of the roadways in Worth Township are the gravel road system. They, they don't have the payment system. They just have one of the smaller budgets within the, in the county. They did, they did apply late last year. So I do know they did go some, through some other funding sources. And we felt that that was one of the projects that provided a good use, a good use of funding.
Cochee, I think Bud's Alley is just around the corner.
It is. It is. It's just down the street there. Yeah. Actually, when you go out the parking lot, make a, get down the hill, make a left. That's where it is. Yes.
And I don't know if we brought it up a week or two ago with the twenty nineteen bridge replacements, but if the county was not providing the six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, the borough of Belfont and Howard Borough would have to come up with that level of money. And that is a massive amount of money for both of those two boroughs.
Right. Combined, those projects are four point six million dollars. When they were looked at, they were two-million-dollar projects. That's just from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four, how much those projects increased. So.
That's insane.
It is. It is insane. So we've been, we've been scrambling to figure out ways to come up with that because we do have a multitude of resources for that. We're using a multimodal grant. We're using some Act thirteen bridge funds, and then we're using the fee for local use funds to be able to cover the, the bridge commitments on these bridge replacements. And these are the last two of the five because we did the rehabs last year that we completed. And now we're moving into the replacements. These are four replacements.
Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, I think it's, we're, you know, as we're looking at, when was the last time a municipality received funding? We're trying to make sure we're very fair in how we disperse them, that we have almost like a cycle going, right?
We do. And there, and I, and I will mention that there are some municipalities that have received funding that, for whatever reason, whether it be construction delays, internal issues, those projects are still pending, if you will. So a lot of the projects that we looked at this year, we wanted to ensure that they were shovel-ready, if you will, so that they would be completed within the upcoming year and that we can turn those funds around and get these projects actually completed. Because we're seeing how the construction costs are just expanding based on, you know, the time and materials and things like that. So with that, twenty twenty-five allocations, we're recommending total four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which is a hundred and eighty-five thousand in liquid fuels, and fee for local use of two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Any other questions?
It looks like we're reserving a little bit of funds for some potential emergencies or projects later in the year then.
We, we are. With the fee for local use, we like to reserve a little bit of that because we can use some of that for the, the bridge bundles, the, the bridge replacements. If there is something that comes up that we do need to allocate those fundings, we kind of have that, that reserve in place.
Right. Any questions from the press on this? No? All right. Looks like we can take a motion on that.
I'll move to add the twenty twenty-five liquid fuels and fee for local use allocations to next week's consent agenda.
I will second it.
We have a motion to second to add the twenty twenty-five liquid fuels and fee for local use allocations to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Cochee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a very small consent agenda. Just take a motion.
I'll move to approve this week's consent agenda.
I will second it.
We have a motion to second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Moving on to authorities, boards, and commissions, we have two appointments to the Conservation District. I think one gentleman replacing his father, who we all have very high opinion.
He's actually continually, he was appointed and then being reappointed. Yes, but he, Chris is serving, has served in, in place of his father, Alan, who passed away tragically a few years ago.
Yes.
Doing a great job, though.
That's what I've heard, that his father was a great person, and Chris also seems to be quite solid. Then there's another name on there. We might debate a little bit.
Probably should. Probably should.
But I hear he's very experienced.
Yeah.
All right. So we have a reappointment of Chris Ishler and Stephen Dursham for a term of January first, twenty twenty-five, to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight, unless there's any questions from the audience.
Steve, is yours supposed to be ending twenty twenty-five?
Every year, we reappoint.
Oh, okay. That's a good idea.
I don't know why that is, but every year I get reappointed.
Oh, okay.
All right. So sorry, Commissioner Dursham's reappointment is on an annual basis.
Okay. Sounds good. Then I will move to approve the A B C reappointments.
I'll let you second that since I.
All right. I will, will second the motion.
I will vote on it.
All right, okay. All those in favor of approving the A B C reappointments do so by saying aye. 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 Pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Moving on to the check run. I think that's Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah. So what I'd like to recognize on the check run today is a check to Hoffman Leakey Architects. They've been doing some work on our courthouse, particularly the entryway, and making the entryway a bit more secure and improving the flow of individuals through that space. So that'll be a good improvement, I think, at the courthouse. With that, I would make a motion that we approve the check run dated November twentieth, the run, check run dated November twenty-second and November twenty-seventh.
I will second all those.
We have a motion to second to approve the check runs dated November twentieth, twenty-second, and twenty-seventh. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. John, do we have an administrator's report?
Nothing to report at this time.
All right. Amber, are we ready to?
So we actually do have a voter registration.
Announcement.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're back.
Yep. We're back in business. Okay. But we do not have any new voters, so.
All right.
We do have, as of today, a hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and twenty total voters registered here in Center County. Of those, forty-five thousand two hundred and fifty are Democratic, one hundred and seventy-six Green Party, six hundred and thirty Libertarian, sixteen thousand five hundred and forty-six with no affiliation, forty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-two Republican, and all other smaller parties comprise two thousand nine hundred and fifty-six. Our precinct of today for the week is Snowshoe Township West. This is precinct seventy-seven. There are three hundred and eighty-three total registered voters in this precinct, and they had a voter turnout of eighty-three point eight percent at the November fifth election. They vote at the New Community Center at thirteen fifty-one West Sycamore Road in Mo Shannon. And we are grateful to the Community Center for the use of that space. And clearly, we had very high turnout for this year's presidential election, and this is certainly one of the places where we had great turnout. So that's our voter report.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Concepcion. Some of our announcements for the Christmas season. Downtown State College is now free two-hour parking with the possible exception of the weekend of December twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second, in case there's a playoff game in State College. Also, we have roughly the same situation in Belfont, two-hour free parking. And as always, in Phillipsburg, and Bollesburg, and Milheim, and all of our other downtowns, parking is free. We have a very, very busy weekend of festivals and craft fairs coming up. Pulling just a short list off the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau, the Center Furnace Mansion is having a stocking stuffer event on December sixth. We have First Friday also on December sixth. On, we also have the Lamont Christmas Market, I think, both on the sixth and the seventh at the Granary. There's a run at Tussie Mountain, King and Queen of the Mountain, on the sixth. And Tempest Productions is having an event. There's music. There's the Belfont Holiday Bash on the sixth. There's improv on the sixth. And then on the seventh, we've got the Women's Basketball versus Indiana. We've got a winter craft market and Bollesburg Hometown Christmas, Christmas at Curtain Village on the seventh.